The Third Annual Evening of Remembrance will take place at the Youth Grove in Central Park on Thursday, April 16th, at 7:20 PM to honor the Santa Clarita Valley youth who have died as a result of traffic-related incidents. The event will be hosted by the City of Santa Clarita and the Blue Ribbon Task Force.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Samuel Chandler, and I do, as others, live in Friendly Valley. Here are a few of my reasons why I'm against the dump. Number one, polluted water runoff after a rain which will enter the watersheds of the local creeks and rivers, and the impact to air pollution on the placarita nature center. Item number two, the garbage dump attracts vermin, including flies and rodents, which carry disease. Dulls will also be attached to this area. Item number three, severe impact on emergency vehicle traffic on Sierra Highway, Golden Valley Road, and San Fernando Road. Particularly important, residents of Friendly Valley who have, on an average, one emergency vehicle per day. Item number four, increased danger to the Golden Valley High School students as they cross Sierra Highway at Golden Valley Road on their way to and from school. Item number five is the 872 additional heavy truck trips a day Monday through Saturday. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next, Lois Jean Danis, followed by Robert Armature.
I also live in Friendly Valley, and my name is Lois Jean Danis. I'm in Association Five there. Everything that has been said is on my card here. I can't imagine anyone thinking of putting a dump in a brand-new, brand-new street, homes, schools, and in allowing 800 and some odd trucks to be traveling the street that is already a parking lot. I just would like to suggest that they put a pretty home on that property and be there legally, because that's the way it is zoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Robert Armature, followed by Bobby Yost.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and people of the audience. I'd like to preface this with thanks to you, Bob, I'm here. Several years ago, I was here, and I asked a question after the meeting, and you told me, "Don't sit out there like a bump on the log. Tell me what you think." So I'm going to tell you what I think. My name is Robert Armigan. I live in Friendly Valley, about two miles from ground dump. At the last meeting, I was pleased to hear Councilman Ferry speak out against a dump. I didn't know how the rest of the council felt, so I decided I'd ask them. I sent emails to all members of the council, asking them, "Are you going to support or oppose this project?" My email didn't go through to councilperson West, so I sent her a letter asking for the same question. I received one response. Councilman person Martha McLean stating, "I would never support a dump anywhere near a residential neighborhood." She went on to explain how these projects are handled. I want to thank her for her courtesy in being the only councilmember to respond to my question. I think this lack of response indicates how the rest of the council feels on this matter. To ignore the question will not make it go away. And by the way, we do know April 8th isn't far away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Armature. Bobby Yost, followed by Marcia McAdams.
Hi, my name is Bobby Yost. I live in Friendly Valley. I would like to request that your honor and councilmembers provide a public opinion prior to April 8th regarding BRTech. If anyone in the audience is running for office also, I would like that to apply to them. How does BRTech get 8.8 acres already in Escarole and out of Escarole without the correct zoning? And by the way, does, excuse me, ma'am, the blond lady, the blond, where do you live?
I live in New Hall.
Well, the dump's not near you, so that's why you're not thrilled to death to be against it. Thank you.
Next, we'll have, I believe I pronounced correctly, Marcia McAdams, followed by Margaret Anderson.
Real quick, just so you don't go up and accuse Councilwoman West, it was actually closer to her house. She actually lives very close, closer to the most people here. So just in defense of her, because she won't say anything, she lives very close to where the site was. So I don't want you to think she was miles away. I just thought you should know that.
But maybe-
She lives there now, real close to where the site is.
Maybe, can I just-
No, I just want to make sure you guys don't attack her when she lives right there.
Can I just ask us to stay with the quorum? We're not here to do something that's going to upset you. We're here to make sure your dollars are protected as taxpayers, and we just have to do a process by law the way we're required. Otherwise, we end up with a mess that will be worse. And I'm just telling you, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I understand how you feel. And I think things will go in a process that will work well, but we need to work together, not be attacking each other.
Please.
Good evening, everyone. Greedy capitalists, left to their own devices, will suck the blood out of the economies, leaving the rest of us to suffer ongoing economic hardship. Who is on that list? BRTech? I understand that there is an agreement for the city to purchase the facility. That's not a problem, provided the facility is in an appropriate location. The individual selling the property? The property is not zoned for this type of facility. This is not the right location for this facility. What about the homeowners? I live in Friendly Valley, and I want to sell my home. I met with a Realtor last Saturday who gave me the numbers in a red folder. Very appropriate in that I'm already upside down. And this facility is not even established yet. I have to disclose the BRTech issue to anyone wishing to purchase my home. Where will the property values go with BRTech on the doorstep? Do we have time to waste? This is not the right location for this facility. Is the city on the list? Who came into office with the promise of saving the city money? Will the purchase of BRTech facility accomplish that? Probably. Will the revenue from this purchase make up for all the permanent loss of the property tax revenue from those impacted communities? You have to think about that. This is not the right location for this facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Anderson, followed by Ellie Lacy.
I will defer to Ellie. We're all saying the same thing, time and time again. I would like to say one thing before I even get going on this. I am a CERT-trained person for our community of Friendly Valley, and I highly recommend that everybody be involved in that CERT training. It's wonderful. Okay, I'm Ellie Lacy. I'm in Friendly Valley. My concern is the dump on Sierra Highway. I made a trip today to Sun Valley to check out the MRF there. Paper was flying everywhere. Trucks were everywhere, and I didn't see a residence of any kind in the surrounding streets. As a Realtor, I fully recognize what this will do to the surrounding property values. The action I desire is no dump in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Next, Margaret Anderson, followed by Ruth Gautier.
No, Margaret deferred to Ellie.
I deferred to Ellie.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpeople.
Good evening.
My name is Ruth Gautier. I also live in Friendly Valley, and I have two things to say before I get to what I have typed up, my little speech. You had mentioned that we should respect BRTech, and another comment was made that we would be publicly advised of anything that was going to be going on. Why weren't we publicly advised before they ever started it? And where's the respect for the people? I, as I said, live in Friendly Valley, and I'm the president of the Recreation Association there. And as has been said before, we're an adult community of 1,290 homes, and most of our residents are in the bracket, age bracket of 80, 90, and even 100. So therefore, a lot of them can't come out here, and we have to speak for them. I know that our board can't be compared to the City Hall, but sometimes we feel that way, because a lot of the residents come to us when they want us to resolve a problem or to make changes. And I know that you have received many letters from many of the concerned residents, and I hope that you've read them. And if you have, then you've heard all the reasons that this would be ludicrous to place this facility in the area that is proposed. As the president for the Friendly Valley Association, I am the spokesperson for a lot of the residents there, a lot of the senior citizens. When I was running for the board, when we were allowed to give a few-minute speech of what we would do, I, at that time, said that I would advocate for the senior citizens in our community. That's what I've been doing, and that's why I'm here tonight. And I also, as someone else mentioned, you know, April 8th is coming up, and I know that when you were in, were placed in the office that you're in now, I'm sure, and I hope, that you had pledged to advocate for the people of Santa Clarita. And we are those people, and we are looking to you for the help that we need at this time. I do know that there's a process, and we appreciate the fact that you have to go through that process. But we also, we need to have someone tell us once in a while what's going on, so that we will be at ease a little bit and know that this facility is going to be placed in the rightful place and not in the residential area with all the communities around there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lloyd Woodson, followed by Dennis Moore.
Mr. Mayor, Bob, I don't want to pick on you, but earlier today-
Oh, joint jump in.
No, no, no. I just have to say this before I get started. Earlier tonight, you made a good speech that excited the people, and this gentleman over here, Ben, made a speech, and they really got excited, and they gave you both a round of applause, and you didn't say a darn word.
Is that it?
That's it. No, that was just picking on you.
You say you're letting me off easy.
Yeah, I was just picking on you a little bit. Last year, we voted to impose assessment on all the property owners to buy land. Have you bought any land? The city, has they bought any land as yet?
The city manager takes notes, and when we get done, he'll respond to your question.
Oh, okay.
But we won't do it in the middle of the process.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Well, the reason I'm asking that is because I know that you're buying land, you're looking at land around the area, and some of that land is within a mile or so of this proposed dump, and I don't think that that's a really good idea, to put a dump where you're going to buy land and make parks out of it, parks. And that's all I have to say, except for the question. Who is going to-
The city manager will, and we conclude the public participation, Mr. Woodson.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Dennis Moore, followed by Arthur Haller.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council. The point I made last time, that the proposed dump has no basis in sound planning practice or principles, is based on the vantage point I come from before, and I served in a planning department of a local municipality. This proposed MRF or dump would impact severely the environment, traffic pattern, and land use, and that's coupled with, you know, having to get zone variances and conditional use permits. So for the life of me, I'm trying to still comprehend, you know, looking at the legal opinion and, ma'am, your opinion, why there would have to be more information gathered. It's still beyond me. I do appreciate the work you're doing. I live around the corner from this proposed dump in Canyon Gate, and I would really like to feel I would still be up here, even if I lived clear across town, because this is the nicest community I've ever lived in. You guys are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
But it's disturbing to me that this proposal has been put on hold and not just terminated. It's inconceivable. You know, and I'm trying not to take it personally, because I feel there's no greater insult or affront to us as fellow citizens that, in effect, you've said, "We don't care about you, because we're going to take our stinking garbage and put it right in your front yard." That's really what you're doing. And so I just simply want to ask the question, how would you like it if, you know, you were living across the street from the dump, and you had the garbage in your front yard? So I just call upon you to just find a way to terminate this now, so it doesn't sneak up on us later, and it could. It's common sense. That's all I'm coming from here. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Mayor, for your opening remarks and the indication.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Arthur Haller, and Arthur will be followed by Cindy Geis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I live in Montesia Homeowners Association on the 14th Freeway. We pleasantly have that mall going in there. The traffic is bad now. We cannot make a turn. I asked the traffic department of the city here to put a red light up there. Hasn't happened, hasn't even responded back to let us know what they can do for us. There's been accidents on the 14th Freeway since they opened it up. I have pictures here. I'll leave it with you. My basic result, I live out here at 14 years in Montesia. My name is Arthur Haller. Okay? I took a ride to the thing in the valley. My son-in-law works at LA Schools over there, Sun Valley. Man, I looked at that thing, all the trash around, like the other person said here, it's a mess. I have signs here with flammable, keep gas foams away. I think about the time a gas station blew up and hurt many neighbors and stuff and everything. The flammable thing could happen. Okay? My other concern is, there's two schools. There's kids outside playing constantly. There's a college over at Baptist College. Kids are outside playing in the football fields and stuff. The smell would be horrible. We have four churches. I go to church behind, outside of Friendly Valley, behind the ambient gas station, sanctuary, sheriff's department, and I do guard work for the kids there to play outside. We have 150 kids there every Wednesday. The smell would be horrible. It'd be in their lungs and everything. Another concern is, my daughter-in-law does real estate with the fellow that owns Melly Ranch, Daniel Vellsway. I talked to him about it, and one of the things the city council should think about, I would think, is you make a lot of money on the filming industry out here. You've got Melly Ranch, and you have Dizzy doing filming right across the street, 14th Freeway. So, and all the accidents and stuff and things that happen in Golden Valley now, and with the mall going in, all I'm asking is, I'm 66-years-old, and I'd just like to have a good quality of life and live out my years here. My house is paid for. I don't want to move again. And I'll leave here with some pictures and stuff.
You bet.
And thanks an awful lot.
Thank you, sir. Next, Cindy Geis, followed by Elaine Martin, followed by Tom Valdez.
Good evening, Mayor Keller and the members of the City Council. My name is Cindy Geis, and I live in New Hall in the neighborhood that would be most severely impacted by this facility. When many of us spoke here two weeks ago, our voices were beginning to be heard. We are grateful that you are listening. In fact, BRTech has temporarily stopped the EIR. In so doing, they stated that they do not want to be located in a place where they are not wanted. We must therefore repeat, this facility is not welcome in its current location. It is time to withdraw this location altogether. I, too, have written to each of you, our City Councilmembers, as well as each member of the Planning Commission. I've also communicated with the new candidates for City Council. While, of course, all the candidates replied, I, too, received only one reply from a council member. While I understand that you cannot comment officially at this time, a reply of some sort, as Councilman McLean did, would have been appreciated, would have been the courteous thing to do. Those of you who can have given strong position statements. Trust me, I will use this information when I cast my vote on April 8th. Our community has been facing some major obstacles, C-Mex, Los Lomas, and this MRF, of course. Together, we are beginning to make a difference. I paid close attention to the rhetoric surrounding the Los Lomas project, because much of it, I feel, applies to this MRF. Both projects would severely impact traffic in this area. Both would change the quality of life of the residents of Santa Clarita. Regarding Los Lomas, Mayor Keller said, "This is the wrong project in the wrong place." He further stated that it, Los Lomas, would have had a massive negative impact on the surrounding communities. This MRF may be the right project," I'm no longer quoting, "this MRF may be the right project, but believe me, it is definitely in the wrong place." Now, again quoting Mayor Keller, "I'm very pleased that the City of Los Angeles voted today to deliver a deadly blow to the proposed Los Lomas project. Now, today, we are asking you, our City Council, to deal the same deadly blow to the proposed location of the MRF. Councilman Boydston's request to agendize this item is right on. We want City Council to make the actual legislative decision to stop this project once and for all, and say clearly that they don't want this project in this location. We all agree, Los Angeles City Council did the right thing by ending a poorly-placed project. Can the City of Santa Clarita do less for its citizens?" Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Elaine Martin, followed by Tom Valdez, followed by Kathy Thompson. And Marcia had a good suggestion, folks. I should have mentioned it earlier. If our speakers could come forward and occupy the front seats over here, it would help to cut down. We still have a number of speakers in our public participation portion.
I raced up here as fast as I could. Mayor Keller, members of the City Council, my name is Elaine Martin, and I live in, I'm a resident of New Hall. First off, I'd like to thank those of you who took an active role in the defeat of the Los Lomas project. That seemed to be another opportunity for someone to benefit at the sacrifice and expense of the community. It was one of the most ludicrous ideas. Wait, here's another one, putting a dump in a residential neighborhood. We were told at the scoping meeting on February 13th of 2008 that homeowners within 1,000 feet must be notified concerning this project. I am in the neighborhood approximately 15,000 feet away. Can someone tell me what magic curtain will stop the noise, the smell, the traffic, and the vermin at 1,000 feet? This plan is wrong. I have read an email response from one of you that states, and I quote, "It is unfortunate that much of the information you have been given is based on assumption and not fact." End quote. The people who have spearheaded this grassroots opposition have been very careful about getting facts, and the fact is, this is a bad idea. I am not disputing the need for the processing facility, but it does not belong in a residential neighborhood. It does not belong near schools or senior residences. The fact that BRTech asked to postpone the EIR is great news. Now you, as our elected City Council, must stop this completely. Marcia McLean has been quoted as saying, "When a neighborhood speaks, we should listen." Well, we're speaking clearly. Who among our elected officials is listening? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Valdez.
I thank you, Mayor Keller, and councilmembers. Thank you very much for allowing us to talk to you. As you might guess, I live in Canyon Gate area, very close, about a mile from the facility that's being discussed. And it just so happens that maybe six years ago, I was at the Sun Valley facility helping a friend of mine carry the refuse from reconstruction he was doing at his home, and it smells pretty bad. And you're not even a block away or farther, it still smells pretty bad. I just can't imagine, when the wind blows our way, that I now have to live with that. I am confident that this location will not be the one that's chosen, that somewhere else will be found. As a project manager, I've designed software systems and built and been responsible for systems for almost every major entertainment company, almost all of the oil companies. I've built systems that affect each one of you every day, and I know that you have a big, large responsibility to us here in making decisions that affect us and yourselves. My experience is that the faster a project goes, the less it costs. The longer you take, the more it costs. I understand that due process and law is very important, and I understand Congressman West, that it is important to do things so that they-
Councilmember, please.
I'm sorry. I don't even know what I said, so I apologize for that. That you want to make sure not to create worse problems than this one, and I agree with you, that's very important. But the sooner that we get to this result of finding the new location, the less it's going to cost us. That will save us money, and I don't believe that this is going to stop until a new location is found. Again, thank you. Thank you very much for listening. I appreciate the efforts, and I do have to say that I've never been to a meeting like this before at any city, and I was very impressed by all the marvelous things that you're doing, and I'm honored to be here and to even have an opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez. Our next speaker is Kathy Thompson, followed by Tracy Riley, followed by Joe Knoxman.
My name's Kathy Thompson. I live on Mountain Pass Road. I'm here, once again, to voice my strong opposition to locating the huge BRTech Garbage and Recyclables Dump and Sort Facility on busy Sierra Highway. Like the Elsmere Canyon landfill, the C-Mex expansion, and Los Lomas, all of which the city has so wisely and valiantly fought, this, too, is the wrong location. Its negative impact will be felt by far too many Santa Clarita residents. On March 18th, I watched the City Planning Commission meeting. I was very pleased to hear the announcement that BRTech has decided to suspend the processing of the application and EIR analysis for now for this site. Although this news is encouraging, the words "for now" are very worrisome. Exactly what does this mean? Does it mean they're going to work and find a proper location, and we will soon hear that they have abandoned the Sierra Highway site for good? Or, on the other hand, could they just be shelving it until after the election? And they're busy circling their wagons, so to speak, while they get their PR machine up and running big time? Once again, we citizens are left in the dark. Then later, I was shown an encouraging email from Mr. Michael Arroquin, a vice president at BRTech. In it, he wrote, quote, "Rest assured, BRTech does not want to operate in an area where we are not welcomed by all concern." End quote. Thank goodness. What a wonderful statement to read. I just pray that it's true. I'm very, still very concerned. I would really like to know how this mess got started in the first place. What made BRTech even think about trying to pursue building a heavy industrial project on land currently zoned residential low and business park, is next to many nice housing additions, and is on a very busy and important commuter road? And it's in a city where preservation of quality of life is so important to residents that we do things like buy open land to keep it open, et cetera. Why didn't the city staff foresee the many problems with this site and dissuade BRTech from pursuing the project at this location from the very beginning? Has the pressure to get this thing built totally clouded the city staff's mind, or what? I'm worried. We've only been a city for 20 years. Have the philosophy and standards this city embraced at its inception already degraded to the point that now preserving quality of life is only a catchy little phrase and is no longer a real goal for the whole city? Since BRTech has stopped work on the EIR, won't the city take this opportunity to kill the EIR somehow on Sierra Highway location? Please have the foresight and the wisdom the Los Angeles County City Council did when they stopped Los Lomas. Tell us Sierra Highway location has been abandoned for good. So many people are anxiously awaiting this news. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Riley, followed by Joe Knoxman, followed by George Figarola.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmen. Good evening. My name is Tracy Riley. I oppose the MRF to be in any residential area within city limits. I had a speech prepared tonight, but I think it's more important to address some issues that I see in both the communication and to acknowledge, at least to give you hopefully some things to think about. First of all- First of all, Ms. West, I appreciate that you like processes. I'm in the airline industry. Most people appreciate when they get on the commercial airline or military that we have processes in place in a business. I can respect that. But I can also respect the money that we spend in order to get this far. As you can see, there's been a lot of time and resources spent, both in the city, I think, in the city business, I'll call it, as well as in the community. I've gone from trying to juggle, trying to spend time doing this, because I can't believe that I don't have somebody else watching my back a little bit better for me. So, I think that you talk about processes. What's the process that does not get us to this point and this far down the path? Maybe even though an EIR has not been spent, what is that process? Los Lomas? The city acknowledged that they did not, they overlooked the paperwork. The skateboarding ring, arena that was here a few weeks ago, what was the time and resources spent there? I think that we need to look at that and what's being wasted. Also, talk about time and money. I know the objective is to get to 75%. What are we doing then about advertising and showing the people that there are other alternatives? What are we doing for recycling? There isn't a recycling can near the bus stops. I walked in this building, there's not recycling trash cans there. What are the small steps the city is making? If we're so concerned about the revenue, then what are the small cities doing about it? Additionally, you're talking about counting on the goal, on revenue. What is it going to do to the city tax and the income that the city receives when our property values aren't there? In addition, city is now counting on, I believe, $33 million for the Golden Valley businesses here in the near future for this year. What are they going to do? People want to come and shop by a MRF? I don't think so. Okay. I also want to address that I was told that, "Well, it's not a dump." We should stop using that language. Well, we'll call it a dump processing center, because that's really what it is. There's still all the environmental effects that most of the people already have already addressed. Next, I want to talk about giving respect to the city and to the residents here. If you look at our average education level here and our income level, we deserve to have some communication. Ken, I'll specifically aim this, discuss this with you. You talk about how we just don't understand. Well, you know, it's interesting how no one understands how the skateboarding piece, the skating skateboarding center, I'm not sorry, I'm not sure exactly what it's called, how the Los Lomas thing got, how does it get to this far? And no one understands, but just six people. So, I just say, consider some other small alternatives if we're going to advertise that this city is for our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Joan Ochsman, followed by George Figueroa. Ms. Riley, I've got mine, too.
Great.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I, like other, my name is Joan Ochsman, and I live in the Sierra State's Princess Home tract in New Hall. And like the others, I did send some emails out, and I want to thank Mr. Boydston for replying to my email, as well as our mayor, Bob Keller, today for doing that as well. I just received your email a few minutes ago. And I don't think that we can say this enough. I think it's so important to realize that we're all in this together. Yes, we need a recycling facility. We understand that. We understand that there could be penalties to the City of Santa Clarita. But let's talk about some of the ways that money's been spent in the past. I know that more than $7 million at one point in time was spent in fighting the whole C-Mex thing, and I know that thousands and thousands of dollars was, were spent in putting up signs and things to protect our community and to make life better for everyone. While I am extremely disturbed, extremely distraught to hear that the plans to build a MRF are simply on hold for a period of time, that simply is not acceptable. That means that we have to continue to listen, we have to continue to watch, we have to continue to monitor. I don't understand why BRTech would go and spend over $3 million on three separate parcels of land on Sierra Highway, looking up the street at homes that some of our city folks have claimed, you know, at least at the last meeting, that they spent upwards in the area of a million dollars for. What would make them think that it's okay to do that when it wasn't zoned appropriately? Why would anyone spend $3 million for a maybe? Maybe they're the only ones that don't have to worry about their property values going down. Maybe they bought it for an investment. They just took ours away. Because with a mandatory transfer disclosure, we have to tell every single person that comes into our community to look at our homes for the purpose of purchasing them, that there is a proposed MRF going down the street, possibly. We don't know. It's a possibility. It's something that's been talked about. All this tells me is that we need to hear from the city council, just like everyone else said. And I thank Mr. Boydston for bringing up a motion this evening, and I respectfully request that you agendize this so that it can be spoken about and so that you can answer us and give us some peace of mind to know that we can go on living in Santa Clarita with the same kind of, of quality of life that we've known to love. Please discontinue any thoughts of placing a MRF in our community, and please look at that area for some other options, like a park. Thank you.
Thank you. George Figueroa, followed by Roger Horning.
Good evening. My name is George Figueroa. I'm a new resident at Friendly Valley.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just moved in in December. I am a retired truck driver. I was a Teamster for 34 years. I lived in the city most of my life. I've lived around a dump. I've lived around a rendering plant. These people don't know what that smell is like during the summertime. It's unbearable. It'll get into your homes. You can't get away from it during the summertime. That smell is going to go all over. My back is worn out. I have asthma now. I've driven diesel trucks for 34 years. The road beat my back to death. You want to save money? Don't destroy our highways with extra trucks on Sierra Highway. The freeways, you limit the trucks down to the, to the slow lane. Sierra Highway, they can drive either lane. Those highway, those roads are going to be torn up, and you're going to spend a lot of money fixing those roads. You're worried about angering BRTech? Worry about angering us. We're more important. Now, I'm just here to voice my opinion because I've made an investment for the first time in a long time, and it's about to get destroyed. Nobody told me that I was going to have a dump site coming up in my backyard. So, I see all these new homes that are being built up there, townhomes up on top of that hill there. Are these people are going to be told that there's going to be a dump site in their backyard? How many of those homes are going to get sold? You're going to lose money there. You talk about losing money, I think, I think you're going to lose more money by putting that dump site there than you would by not... Maybe I didn't say that right, but anyway, it shouldn't be there. It shouldn't be there because it's going to deteriorate our health, it's going to deteriorate our highways, it's not going to help us one bit being right there in our backyard. You need to find somewhere away from the residential areas and away from the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figueroa. Mr. Figueroa, our last speaker on this, and then we'll talk about the written comment cards, is Roger Horning. Roger.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It was stated that we needed more information, and we were supposed to have a meeting with BRTech, and they didn't come to it. If they wanted to give us more information, they could have done that. Also, I'm, I'm in favor of due process, definitely. But one of the questions I have is that if BRTech is doing this at the city's request, why can't we request that they do it in a different location? I'm definitely not against recycling. I think that's great. I use my recycling trash can. But I'm just curious why this is being placed in the city next to a neighborhood? And I do live in the neighborhood that is the closest to this proposed location. And I, I also would like to understand the reasons, because I'm, you know, like, it makes no sense to me that we would put this, this dump processing facility where it is, and I feel like there must be some really good reason why this would even be considered. And I haven't heard anything, and so I'm feeling like there's, there's something, you know, behind the scenes that I'm not sure what it is, and maybe there's some real good information, real good reasons, and if I understood that, you know, maybe that would make some sense. But I can't think of anything. It, it really doesn't make sense to put this next to a neighborhood. You think about the traffic problems, the road damage, the congestion. This is where my kids will be walking to and from school. There, there's a junior high, elementary school, where all my kids are next year. They'll be in a junior high. Following that, they'll all be in a high school. So there's all this traffic that's going to be right there, and I'm really concerned about that. And there have been plenty of, you know, reasons mentioned tonight. And then I, I do have a question, which maybe could be addressed later, but I at least wanted to ask it. And I'm, I'm just curious why Councilman Ferry didn't second Councilman Boydston's motion, because in the last meeting, it sounded like you said that's what you wanted to do. And so I know his motion died, but it died because nobody seconded it, and I'm just curious why you didn't second that. So those are just, those are my, 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 my thoughts. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Horning. And stand by one moment.
Thank you. With all the people here that are here specifically for the MRF, maybe the city manager comments specifically this issue, the city attorney, I'm, we could comment to this issue specifically before we move on. I think most people are here for that purpose.
Already planned that.
Okay.
We had an additional six cards in opposition, I might add, ladies and gentlemen. So once again, we've got a significant number of people coming forward on this matter. I, I would like to reiterate what was said at the last meeting, and with all, and I mean huge respect, we can't take too many of these midnight 1 o'clock meetings anymore on the same issue. Let me, let me just add to it a little bit, and then I'll make comment, and then I want to turn it over to the city manager. On the comparison to Los Lomas, and folks, please, just trying to understand a couple of things. We fought Los Lomas for like five or six years, and along with Councilman down in Los Angeles, Greg Smith, and obviously, we were successful in winning that one. The City of Los Angeles was able to vote that out on the front end rather than the back end because it was outside the city limits, and by statute, it provided them an avenue that they could address it up front legally, and subsequently did so on what turned out to be a 10 to 5 vote, and, and we all celebrated with that outcome, because this has been a long, difficult battle for, for all the folks that have come together to battle that. I did something the other day, and all of us, read and try to get back to our, our citizens and do the best we can on these matters. I had lunch with a gentleman who used to be in a trash business, and I said, hey, considering which I've recently learned, this is going to be a dirty MRF, what's your take? And his take was, hm, think I'd have to move. Really? He said, yeah. He said, "They haven't even heard about that part yet with those backup bells going, which are illegal, you cannot disconnect them." He said, "Everybody within 1,000 feet is going to go crazy in just a matter of days when that starts." And I, I'm not trying to add fuel to your fire, but what I'm telling you, you, I said it, say it again, you think we're not listening? Ladies and gentlemen, we hear you loud and clear. I mean, this city... Now, having said that, I am going to request our city manager, and maybe we can do this, and I hope we can, because I love you dearly, but we don't need to see you every meeting. What would be, well, as a matter of fact, I know we can. I'm going to respectfully ask, ask Ken that we contact BRTech's management and set up a meeting, and if my fellow council members will approve it, you and I to meet with them, and we are going to, or I will, respectfully submit that they give us in writing a complete abandonment of this location so that we can go on with our lives and alleviate your concerns. I believe, ladies and gentlemen, that would get us where we need to be on this matter, and we'll report back to you. Believe me, we want to see this come to a conclusion as well, I guarantee you. But as indicated by our city attorney, certain things, and Lorene West, by law, folks, we, we've got to follow the law, as frustrating as it is at times, and trust me, I know about frustrating laws. So, I, I just simply tell you, maybe if we sit down with him and get some eyeball contact, we can get this thing put behind us. Does that sound acceptable, Ken?
Yes.
And your comments, and then we'll move on to the other portion of the public participation.
Thank you very much, mayor and members of the city council. I'd like to start and talk about the meeting that was canceled with Mr. Firdman and the Canyon Country Advisory Committee. That was canceled after BRTech made their announcement. So it seemed it was moot to send BRTech out there and try and sell a project that they really weren't pushing anymore. They were more in the listening mode, trying to figure out what the community wanted, whether or not this thing made sense, and they didn't want to go out there and, and listen to a lot of people hollering at them, getting the community all, all excited over something they were thinking at this point, hey, it doesn't look like this is going to fly anyway. It just seemed moot to them. I want people to know, staff talked to Mr. Firdman on the phone and answered all his questions. There was a meeting that he's correct, Darren Sigmiller did not attend. We sent Travis Miller, Travis Lang, who is in charge of environmental services. So we haven't been trying to avoid any meetings, we're trying to send the right people and get the proper information out. There are no plans to resurrect this after the election. That is not true. We do not control BRTech. They're a private industry. We cannot tell them to submit plans, we can't tell them to withdraw plans, we just simply don't have the authority to do that. That being said, based on my discussions with BRTech, they, like any other private sector company, does not want to throw good money after bad money. They also are listening to the community and have said that they want to look at exploring other alternatives. They are, however, making a multimillion dollar business decision, and all of this information from the public came out a couple of weeks ago. I think it's fair to let these people take some time and figure out, now that they have this information, to do something that makes sense for them. I, I, I think that is a reasonable request. I'm happy to sit down and talk to them over the next week or so and explain to them what we've heard over the last couple of meetings and see exactly what they're willing to do. I want the community to know that the council's sitting here trying desperately to do what is in the best interest of the community. If the council takes action on something that is not on the agenda, if the council takes action on something that does not give a property owner their legally due process, that opens up this city to potential litigation. And quite frankly, we would lose. And what that would mean is then BRTech or somebody else can sue the city, they can make money, and then when these people are down here in two or three months from now, and we're dealing with the budget, and they want new police officers, they want tennis courts, they want parks, they want us to have money to buy something, we're going to have to say, hey, we don't have that money. We, we gave all that money to BRTech because we didn't follow the law, we didn't allow them to do the due process. So, I want the people to know that the council is in a tough decision and can't just sit up here and give something that the people, you know what they want to hear, but I know that the council feels like, hey, I don't want to do that and, and jeopardize the, the city. We, with the comments that many of the people made, I think one can, could conclude that the council has taken some action in support of a MRF at this site, and that simply has not happened. The council has not taken any action to support the MRF at this site. There were questions about why wasn't the public advised? Well, I can say, number one, if, if the city was trying to keep, keep this secret, we certainly didn't do a very good job. We sent out notices to people way beyond that which... We sent out notices to people way beyond that which is legally required. There's comments about work has started on the site. Work has not started on the site. The EIR consultant was selected. They were selected in a publicly noticed meeting in an effort to start what is a very public and long process. I don't want Mr. Abbott to go without getting questions or answers to his questions, but he had four or five questions, rather than get into all that. I would ask that Tina, could you raise your hand? That maybe Mr. Abbott could get those questions to Tina Dodd, and we'll give him answers. And the specific question about whether any of the open space money has been spent, yet the answer is no. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
I just want to answer the gentleman real quick. I made my position very clear last time. I speak as one person. This is a body. The body is what does a policy. Today, when the city attorney gave his opinion, I'm also an attorney, so I understand the litigation part of if we do a moratorium, we might end up having to pay and do exactly what the city attorney did. So just want to make sure that's aware.
Alan, please. Appreciate it.
Mayor, do you mind if we just take a quick break? I really need to make a quick call and use the restroom.
Before we continue?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take...
Mayor, one point I'd like to make about the moratorium, and that is, a moratorium normally prohibits all uses, that is, a specific use throughout the city. And, you know, there's probably little question, but what we would be challenged in court on adopting a moratorium. So, you know, that's an alternative that is probably not very feasible as far as the city is concerned and the city's treasury, and certainly working with BRTech on some basis that you suggested is a far better and cheaper, I should say, less expensive solution to this problem.
Thank you, Carl. We'll resume our meeting at 5:08. We stand on a break.